Audience, city staff and council members, this is the January 3rd, 2012 meeting of the Lake Forest Committee of the Hall. We want to begin by first having the role taken.
Honorable James Cowie.
Here.
Acting Chairman Novit.
Here.
Alderman Waldeck.
Here.
Alderman Moore, absent. Alderman Pendleon, absent. Alderman Marsh.
Here.
Alderman Schoenheimer, absent. Alderman Palmer.
Here.
Alderman Nadelman.
Here.
Six present, three absent. Mr. Chairman, we have a quorum.
Thank you. First item on our agenda for today is the approval of the minutes of the December 5th, 2011 committee meeting. Are there any comments on the minutes that were provided? Does anyone want to go first with comments? There being no comments, is there a motion for an approval of the minutes?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None? Motion carries. Second item on the agenda, and probably the largest item, would be discussion regarding the ordinance relating to the use of electronics while driving. In this case, Police Chief Berger and Officer of the City Manager Inter and Aaron Staley?
Staley.
Staley, I'm sorry.
No.
I have a problem with the bears right now, so reference to Staley.
Yeah, we can put it up here. Go ahead. Well, good evening, Chairman, and members of the committee. It was requested by the legal committee that the city staff look into the city's position regarding the use of electronic devices while driving. Having now looked into the topic, staff is seeking direction from the committee regarding which option would best address this matter. A little bit of background, at least as far back as January 2010, the state of Illinois currently prohibits the use of cell phones by bus drivers, texting by all drivers. Additionally, the state outlawed the use of cell phones by novice drivers, novice being defined as anyone under the age of 19, and finally, the use of cell phones while driving in a school zone or a construction zone. Additionally, since then, at least four surrounding communities, outlined in this map up here, have gone above and beyond, passing at least hands-free ordinances, which goes obviously above and beyond the current state statutes. Highland Park, the community that passed this in May 2011, or, yeah, May 2011, has already issued over 400 citations and warnings, which signifies that, you know, it's an offense that's taking place on a regular basis, depending on your stance on the issue. Additionally, I just found this out today, as of today, from the citizen survey that was done here in the community, based on 64 percent of the survey responses, 68 percent of respondents supported a stronger stance towards the use of electronic devices while driving. So with that, city staff narrowed down three options. One, we can continue to enforce the current state statutes but increase our enforcement here in the community. Option two is to adopt a hands-free ordinance, which would limit the use of electronic devices to hands-free devices only. And option three is to adopt a distracted-driving ordinance, which would also limit the use of electronic devices to hands-free, but it would also allow the Lake Forest Police Department to pull over a vehicle that, say, the driver was reading a newspaper or eating food, anything that hindered their ability to adequately drive the vehicle. So if the committee chooses option two or three, an ordinance has been prepared and is ready for first reading during the upcoming council meeting tonight. With that, the chief and I are happy to answer any questions that the committee may have.
Ann.
I have a question.
Absolutely.
You mentioned an increase in citations in Highland Park, I think you said 400, which I'm assuming is generating more revenue for Highland Park, which I guess is a good thing for them. Do you have any statistics about the number of accidents in Highland Park? Has there been a decrease in the number of traffic accidents since the ordinance has passed?
Yeah, absolutely, Chief, I think. Alderman, they haven't even had it for a whole year yet, so I don't think that they'll have the statistics for at least another two or three years if accidents have gone down by the increase in tickets for the cellphone ordinance.
And how do you, how would you propose giving notice of people of the existence of this ordinance? Would you post signs?
Actually...
You know, entering town?
Sure. We've talked about that. We could do it just like we do for the 3:00 to 5:00 parking ban, the 3:00 a.m. to 5:00 a.m. parking ban, on all the major streets that come into town. We have a sign posted that says, "No parking from 3:00 a.m. to 5:00 a.m. on any city street." So we would probably, we can just add a sign to that. We also would propose probably a 30, 60, or 90-day period where we would just write warnings and use that as an educational period to notify all the drivers in town, at least all the residents, that we have this new ordinance in place.
Because, I'll be honest with you, I haven't noticed any signs driving in and out of Highland Park. Maybe they exist, and I just haven't seen them. I was aware of their ban because I read about it in the paper, but I'm just kind of curious if, you know, someone who's coming from elsewhere, you know, how are they to know when they enter into the town of Highland Park that they can't use their cellphone there?
Right, and I'm not sure how Highland Park did it, but we would propose signage, something like that.
How is Highland Park cited, people? Have they had people with cameras out there in the streets photographing cars going by, or?
No, they've done it a couple of different ways, Alderman, kind of the same way we've done enforcement in the school zones, which is we'll have an officer standing out in the road or on the side of the road to watch as people come by, and if they're on their cell phones, we'll pull them over further down, further down the road, and issue them a warning or a citation, either one. And they've done that. Highland Park's done a lot of that in their business district. Because it's a little bit bigger than ours, they have more of an opportunity to do it that way.
Okay, thank you. Chief, regarding options two and three, are they mutually exclusive?
No, I think that one is actually more restrictive. The distracted-driving ordinance would cover cell phones, anything that you would be doing in your vehicle other than driving.
Eating fast food?
Eating fast food, if it causes an accident, Alderman, yes, sir. So the cellphone, the hands-free ordinance, I think is probably the right way to go. That would be my opinion.
In terms of this distracted-driving ordinance, isn't it kind of up to the discretion of the police officer, too? I mean, what constitutes personal grooming? I know some things obviously do. You can't, you know, shaving or giving yourself a haircut, but I'm just, you know, kind of, you know, you know, I mean, isn't there, it seems like it leaves a lot of discretion for the police officer, you know, in terms of what actually, what's reading? If I look at directions that I've written down, am I reading in the car? I mean, clearly, reading a newspaper, I would think you could find a way to give a ticket for that now if you saw it, but maybe not.
Sure, and I think what the, the way the officers would handle it is, is if someone is doing something that would take them away from driving, that, you know, Alderman would cause them to weave in a lane or something like that, kind of similar to a DUI driver.
Yeah, just general comment, and maybe it's, I'm getting older, and maybe questioning a lot of things that come forward, but to a certain degree, we're getting to the point where we're trying to legislate or pass ordinances that are confirming what common sense would dictate. Of course, when you're driving, you should be paying attention, that should be your focus. Other activities, if there's a poodle on your lap jumping out the window, maybe that's not appropriate when you're driving, but any reasonable person would know that. And we do the state laws as they exist right now, and as far as, you know, damages that occur, you could sue the person. Clearly, you're being unreasonable, you're being negligent, and you're responsible for losses that occur due to your neglectful driving. The fear that I have, and was brought up by a message today, is that we're going to be putting more attention of police officers on enforcing laws that, again, are just common sense items, that there is a civil way to address. And the other thought is, just public relations-wise, our poor police officers have enough to go through in a day, aside from taking the raft of people who get tickets for cellphone usage in cars. I don't know if this is a burden I really want to put on the police department by expanding what the state law is. I appreciate the public relations goodness that we get by expanding the territory, but I'm not sure if it's really a necessary area to go into at this point. Again, certainly, people should drive carefully, and I think that's a message we should get across to everyone, but are we doing this? What's the drive? Are we really bettering our community, or raising more money, or just wasting hours?
Sure, I think there's two things, Alderman. Number one, the recent study by the National Highway Traffic Safety Administration indicated that distracted driving is actually becoming more of an issue as the years go on, and is causing more accidents and more fatalities. And from the recent survey from city residents, you know, 68 percent think we should be enforcing something like this.
But I think distraction, I mean, I've seen data that says that any talking on a cellphone, whether it's a hand, hands-free or handheld device, is a distraction.
Mm-hmm.
I mean, there are a lot of things changing the radio stations distracting, screaming kids in the backseat are distracting. I mean, there's a lot of, it's, I think the word can't use that I'm kind of glomming onto is necessary. Is it necessary to intrude this much on our citizens?
Sure, I understand what you're saying.
There are a lot of other ways you can be distracted, and you may be right about, if you're on the phone, even hands-free, that it's a distraction. But like the old saying, the perfect is the enemy of the good. I think it would be an improvement, because for whatever reason, and your comment about common sense, my observation is when people get in cars, miraculously, common sense just deteriorates. And I see people who I'm sure otherwise are quite normal people doing just amazingly stupid things day in, day out in their cars. So I don't think we can trust to that. I think it is something that you need to legislate on, because people don't do the right thing. And it seems that when they're on their phone and it's up to their face, for whatever reason, why they have to raise their voice, or why they have to look at the phone, but you see, it's a reflexive action, that people seem to be doing this rather than looking at the road. And so, I mean, it's a step, we can see what the statistics show if we do it. I would say, one step at a time, and let's try, you know, just the handheld receivers. If you can do it, hands-free, fine, we may come to a point in the future where we say, well, we got to go further, but it's a start, and I'd be really interested to see what happens in Highland Park, because they're ahead of us. And we can always repeal this, but I think it's worth a try.
Yeah, pulling back two inches, and truly, if you're going to be a driver, would we be better off going on the idea that when you're operating a motor vehicle, you can't be multitasking and doing any other action while you're driving a car? It might be easier to then draw exceptions from taking away from the task of driving, but you should be providing your full attention to operating the motor vehicle. There's a wide multitude of things that are going to come down on the black line of, well, wait, is this a distraction or not? It's going to be a judgment call for a police officer, and it almost puts them in an unfair position of making the call at a certain point in time when it might not be appropriate. The task is driving and operating the motor vehicle. It's not a right, it's a privilege, that's what your license is for. So again, should we just be enforcing what the state law is at this point? That you devote your complete attention to operating the motor vehicle, except for if there's an emergency that merits maybe using a cellphone. It's easier to draw the exceptions than write in everything that might be excluded or might be a distraction, and it's just a thought.
If I can chime in, I've got a 24-year-old, and when he turned 16, he had the iPod glued to his ears. And we had a rule in the house, when you take the car, you cannot use the iPod or your cellphone in the car. And he survived his adolescence. In the last year, year and a half, I've, my vehicles now are all Bluetooth-equipped, and I can tell you firsthand personally, my hands are on the wheel and my eyes are on the road. And eyes on the road is the most important thing. And I've never done it in this jurisdiction, but someone may have seen me on a back road with a cheeseburger in one hand, a Diet Coke in the other, wondering how's he steering with his knees, maybe? And, but my eyes are on the road. But those cell phones, and everybody's got a cellphone, not everybody eats a cheeseburger and a Coke while driving down the road, but everybody's got a cellphone, it takes your eyes off the road, and it only takes that split second to stray across the lane, or whatever.
I'm sorry, I was just trying to, you distracted me there. I was trying to operate.
Sorry. So my point is...
I missed where I lost where you were talking about the cheeseburger and how that was different from the cellphone.
I'm talking about the cellphone, specifically cell phones, and maybe iPods, too, being a device that distracts your eyes from the road, and that's critical. I don't, I'm not worried about the burden on the police department, because their role isn't so much to meet out punishment as it is for our ordinance to be a deterrent. We have the ordinance, then people drive with the fear of getting a ticket, and maybe what they'll do then is comply with the ordinance, and they'll get a little Bluetooth device, and that will make our roads safer. So I, whether or not we issue a lot of tickets or a few tickets, the point that we can issue tickets is going to be the deterring factor that's going to make people drive more safely, hopefully. And there's lots of people who don't have cell phones and drive abominably, and there's nothing we can do about that.
But it worries me when you say you drive with a cheeseburger.
Not in this jurisdiction.
He's not talking with his mouth full.
No, but, you know, all these things, you drop the cheeseburger in your lap and you're...
Sure.
Yeah, I mean, they're all distractions, and again, it's common sense that you devote your time to making sure you're driving safely. There's a wide range of items that we could draw in there.
None are as prevalent as the cell phones, okay? None.
But also, downtown in Chicago, there's been discussion of, we have a problem with pedestrians that are being involved in motor vehicle accidents, and the pedestrians are equally as distracted as they walk down the street with their iPads or phones or whatever the distraction is. And how do we deal with that? How do we deal with the pedestrian that just walks into the roadway?
Darwin's theory, right?
Darwin takes care of it.
Yeah, well, Alderman trying to operate iPads, but there's, there's a lot of distractions, but again, it boils down to common sense, and I'm not really sure I want to go beyond the state regulation at this point. Also, for people visiting the town, again, you could post signs, but, you know, it becomes maybe a little ogre-ish on people who are visiting the community and really aren't acquainted.
You know, I go down Telegraph Road into Bannockburn, they've got the sign posted, you can't miss it, and you just, you use your Bluetooth. It's not such a big...
I'm just not sure we need to intrude that much on people's lives. I think it's one thing, I mean, the state has a law, the law is a good law, the no-cellphone use under 19, that makes a lot of sense to me. They're new drivers. But, you know, those of us who've been driving for 20, 30 years are much more experienced, and should the state decide to ban the use of all handheld cell phones, well, then, of course, you know, it'll be uniform throughout our state and we'll all comply, but I'm just not sure that we, individual municipalities need to get involved on this level.
Sounds like we have a complete lack of consensus.
It does. It's going to happen.
That's what I would think.
It does.
So what are our options, given a complete lack of consensus? Should we shove this back to the legal committee, or?
No, we can vote on it and be done with it. If it fails on the court...
Should we just move it off to another day, or?
We could wait, we could wait till we have a full quorum.
Mr. Chairman, can I just make two quick comments? One, I think you have some people in the audience that are here this evening to be able to speak on this subject matter. Number two is, is that at least two of the Aldermen who are not here today contacted me saying they were in support of the proposed ordinance, and so if you act on it tonight, depending on how you act on it, they come back again next meeting when they're here. So I only raise that because they wanted me to convey those, their positions to the full council.
Well, maybe out of deference, we should talk about it again.
Well, I think we can proceed to have public comment.
Yeah.
But I would put off considerations of it when we have a full quorum.
We could think about it for a second. But are there any members of the public who would like to comment on this issue? And sir, if you'd want to step up, or?
I'm the only one?
Yeah, pressure's on. And before you speak, if we could just ask that you identify your name and address?
I plan to. I read your notes, I read your program. Thank you. I was very interested in what you all had to say up there. My name is Aaron Wolf. I'm a resident of Highland Park. And if you ask me on the city council there, they will tell you I'm largely responsible for the ordinance the city of Highland Park finally passed. I proposed, first proposed an ordinance to ban all cell phones while driving in 1999, and it wasn't until a year ago today that the city of Highland Park finally passed an ordinance which banned handheld cell phones. What I'm going to ask you to do today, I know is not politically something that's easy to do. I'm going to ask you to consider passing a cellphone ban on all cell phones, not just handheld. The reason is, talking on a cellphone is different than any other kind of distraction. It's cognitive. You can be looking at the road, but while you're talking on a cellphone, you don't realize what's happening. You could be driving at slow speeds, high speeds, going right, left, you don't realize it. It's just a fact that's shown and proven over and over again. The landmark study of this was in 1997, published in the New England Journal of Medicine, which examined the cellphone records of about 20, 25,000 cell phones, vehicles that were involved in accidents. This was in Canada, where they could get access to the cellphone records. The result of that study was, which I took, I think one was a M.D. and one was a physi, some other profession, was that people talking on any kind of a cellphone, handheld or hand-free, was essentially driving while legally intoxicated, and was four times more likely to be in an accident than someone who wasn't talking on a cellphone. Now, the, there is, there have been many studies since then, all going to the point that handheld or hand-free, talking on a cellphone is a dangerous thing to do. It causes accidents, it causes deaths and serious injuries. And while I know one Alderman spoke about, you know, we don't want to burden the police, but it's more important, I think, to protect the safety of our citizens, even if it burdens the police more than otherwise, because people who drive on cell phones, they don't know what they're doing half the time. The National Transportation Safety Board, as you know, came out with a recommendation last month that, to the effect that all cellphone use while driving should be banned, made illegal. And in doing so, they said, among other things, that while they knew it was politically difficult to do, it is the right thing to do. And that's what you're elected to do, what is right, not just what is politically expedient, if I may say so. I think, that's what I think. I'd like to point out that there was a recent editorial in the Tribune, which I think spoke for a complete ban, but it wasn't exactly as strong as it might have been, but it also said something which was incorrect factually. That editorial, which is last month, was, said that there are 10 states that have banned the use of all cell phones. That is absolutely not true. There isn't one state that has done that. There are many states which have banned cell phones while driving, and many for texting. Now, texting is no doubt worse than just talking on a phone, because when you're texting, you not only have your mind off the road, but you have your hands off the wheels and your eyes off the road. And there's no doubt that is a serious problem. But I think the record will show that there are probably 10 times at least more people talking on cell phones at any given time than there are texting. So really, it's more important in looking at the total picture to ban the use of texting, all-cellphone talk while driving. And if you have any questions, you know, I could talk forever. I know it's four minutes according to what you want me to say, and I'd be happy to step down, but if you have any questions, I'll be happy to try to answer them.
Ann. Well, we appreciate your comments, and of course, we appreciate your coming here tonight to comment on the issue.
It's a subject which has been dear to my heart for a long time, and I have no ax to grind. I mean, I'm just a bumbling lawyer for 55 years and a labor arbitrator, and I know the importance of safety and industry. And I got interested in this, I will tell you this, when I was in the loop practicing law, which is left there a couple of years ago, and I would see people turning in State and Madison or Dearborn and Washington, turning into a crowd of people walking across the street, talking on their cell phones. I said, this is terrible, you can't do that. You have to stop it, and someone has to pick up the ball and run with it, and that is to ban all cell phones while driving. Thank you very much.
Thanks. And any other members of the public who would like to comment on this issue? And there being none, any further discussion from council?
I'd just like, first of all, I do appreciate your sincere feelings on the matter. There's lots of things we do in our cars that are cognitive, whether it's holding a conversation with the passenger, whether it's thinking about a problem we want to solve, work-related, whether it's daydreaming, or looking at a pretty girl on the sidewalk as you drive by, there's nothing you can do. That's the way we are. But you got to keep your eyes on the road, and those cell phones require you to take your eyes off the road, and that's where I think the danger comes in, in a split second you can kill or maim somebody.
Chief, could you, you mind if I ask you a couple of questions, just to follow up?
Sure.
One, what is the status of cellphone usage in CDL drivers? Is that, is that effective this year, that they're not allowed to be on the phone?
That just changed January 1st, Mayor, where anyone holding a CDL can't use a push-to-talk device or a cellphone while they're driving.
Okay, so that's positive, that's a federal law?
Correct.
And then, the last gentleman commented on the NTSB. My, I didn't quite understand that to be that that was from the NTSB or a single board member who made a comment regarding that? Because I thought there was some clarification there that I think needs to be made, too. And I'm not saying one way or the other, I'm just not sure that was a position by the board, but simply a position by a member.
A board member. No, I think it was a study that the National Highway Traffic Safety Administration did come out with last month, where they recommended no cellphone use at all.
They did?
Yes.
Okay, because there was some article, too, I read in the paper, and there was some discussion about whether it was a formal position or not, so.
Mm-hmm.
And at this point, I'm sorry.
First, should we, should we just defer this?
Yeah, it'll come up at the council meeting, and we'll defer it to the next meeting.
Or the meeting after.
Or the meeting after.
Or the meeting after that.
Sometime down the road.
It sounds like we don't have any urgency on this topic.
Well, it says we have a quorum, we'll go on it.
Yeah.
Yeah, so agreed that we'll...
So make your calls quickly, get it all the way.
But it's an issue that should be discussed by full council, and we will defer to council meeting where we have all members present.
Is there ways, Chief, though, I guess the only one last question, sounding like we don't, aren't quite there, are there ways to kind of accommodate the, let's not be overreaching Big Brother government here, and come up with something that might encourage the public to be more safe in their driving?
We can do more education, like we've done in the...
Perhaps, perhaps there's an interim staff.
We can do more education like we've done in the past. We do, we did do education always around the beginning of the school year, when we talk about school zones and construction zones, and did some extra enforcement then, Alderman. We could do something like that.
Maybe we jump up the enforcement on the current laws or something as a way to lean or deal with this issue.
Yeah, or expand it to business district as well as school district. Might be a thought, just to expand certain areas.
Mm-hmm.
Well, there's certainly a strong police presence, I think, in the school district, especially with schools getting in and coming out of session, and in the business district as well. I mean...
Sure. And, you know, we do it in the fall, when the weather's nice, because there's many more children who walk or ride their bikes to and from school, not so much in the wintertime.
Okay, any other comment?
I'll throw in one other thought, and that is, people buy new cell phones a lot more frequently than new cars, so all the new cell phones pretty much have Bluetooth, whereas the cars don't. Maybe we could compile a list of where you can buy a plug-in cigarette lighter Bluetooth thing, which they have for pretty inexpensive, I understand. We can enlighten our general public to, you can convert your old beater to Bluetooth with your new cellphone or smartphone and drive hands-free.
with your new cellphone or smartphone and drive hands-free. And it does give people peace of mind. I don't know if any of you use your hands-free in the car. It's a lot more comforting way to use a phone.
Now, good thought. Good. This time, that is the last comment, and we'll go on to the next item on the agenda. And this would be the Public Works Report, and Mike Thomas will be presenting that.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, honorable mayor members of the committee. This evening, staff will be requesting at the city council meeting advanced purchase of two items in our FY13 capital equipment. First item is one of our recycling trucks that is 10 years old. We want to actually order this early. It takes upwards of seven months for them to build trucks of this nature. We'd like to ask for city council approval this evening so we can place the order. This truck has over 15,000 operating hours on it, over 100,000 miles. Since we placed it into service 10 years ago, we have spent over $184,000, $181,000 on maintenance of this truck. We reviewed it initially with the Public Works Committee. We developed specifications, put them out to bid, and in front of you this evening is the bid tabulation. The second item is an attachment that we would put on the front of one of our other yard waste slash recycling trucks, where it would help us to collect the new recycling carts. It's an automated mechanism called a Corrado can. All the major waste companies use this specific item. It will greatly speed up the collection of the recycling carts compared to the way we are doing it currently. When we switched from bins to carts, it actually took us more time on the routes to get the material collected. The bins, you simply throw in the container. Here, we have to hook them up and hydraulically lift them. So we want to move to a much more efficient system, and we believe the Corrado can is the way. So with that, it's a basic introduction on both items. The write-up is in front of you. I'd be happy to answer questions on either item. We have a little video that we showed the Public Works Committee on the Corrado can, if you're interested in seeing that. God knows I've watched it many a times.
We all love it.
And any comments or discussion from council?
I just have a general question. Did the city at some point look into privatizing waste collection?
A number of years ago, I would say it was probably upwards of six to seven years ago we did. And in fact, we did place specifically the recycling portion out to bid and compared our numbers. We were definitely better than the private sector. We will be able with a lot of different things, but primarily the compost center. We don't pay, for example, FET, federal excise tax, on our equipment. We have the compost center where we, it's right inside our city borders. The trucks are here, so we dump two of our three items, yard waste and recycling, here. We don't have to travel out of town. Our trucks don't have to travel from Antioch or Wheeling to come into town. All of those things add up, and we believe we have been and continue to be competitive with it. So the short answer is yes, we have in the past. Recently, within the past five years, no.
I'm just suggesting we should probably review it at some regular basis, I don't know, five-year period, 10-year period, you know? Because obviously with pension costs and other benefit costs going up for our employees, that puts us at a disadvantage. It may be offset by advantages we have, but it doesn't hurt to look.
Sure, sure.
Any other thoughts? And just one general comment, and this is kind of peripheral issue. Since we've gone to the larger capacity recycling bins, has there been an increase in recycling that has been processed by the city?
There has been, yes. Actually, the carts, we have our numbers. We actually had our highest month this past month in December. We collected 284 tons. Last December, same time period, obviously, 222 tons. So compared December to one year ago, and we see that with the prior three months as well. And again, that only is outfitting half of our households with the carts. We have applied for a grant, again, with the State Department of Commerce and Economic Opportunity for another grant, and if we are successful, or if we are not, we will be coming back to you in the spring to request approval to purchase the remaining 3,000 carts, and we'll outfit the rest of the city, so.
Okay. And the one attachment that's going to be used for the trucks will actually increase the usefulness of the trucks or the speed that they could serve as residents?
Correct. The speed, the speed at which we actually will collect the carts, yes. And the way this truck is spec, it built, is it allows us flexibility. So we can take that mechanism off, put a different bucket on the front, same guy can go back to the route and collect yard waste. We can collect garbage, we can collect anything with it.
Will it potentially reduce the amount of persons that have to man trucks to remove recycling?
It, yeah, it has that potential, and we'll work towards that. But yes, that's what, that's the bottom line in the end. We're really looking to try and speed things up. Because again, the bins were something very easy to collect. They simply would take them, dump them upside down, scoot them across the ground, and they're on to the next one. The way we're doing it now, they're physically walking the cart to the front of the truck, hooking it up, throwing hydraulics, unhooking it, bringing it back to the curb. It takes more time. So this mechanism, it'll be able to just pick it up, dump, and go. But that's our goal.
And this will be on the agenda for city council today?
Correct, correct.
Okay. If there's no further questions, public comment on this issue? I'm trying to think, that would be the last item on the agenda, and, well, except for the iPad updates, that would be the next item, if there is any update.
I was going to ask a quick question, Michael, only because I've had this thing on my own head, is, I know we haven't had a deal with the winter yet, with the snow, but if we had a winter like last year, do we have any tips or guidance to residents on what to do with those huge carts?
With regards to the winter?
Where you put them?
Where you put them?
Should you put it square in the middle of your driveway? Should you put it on your sidewalk? I mean, perhaps you should let people know.
Okay. And that's a very good point.
I mean, it was a challenge last year, just with the regular bins, because the snow was piled up pretty high. If you can imagine lugging a big, heavy cart up your driveway, and where do you put it, might be good.
The nice thing with this Corrado can is that you can place the cart in any direction, which is nice. But it does have a certain amount of reach. But that's a very good point. If that can, that recycling container is 20 feet from the curb, okay, well, the guy's getting out, and he's got to pull it to the curb. It's got to be close to the curb. And we need it away from mailboxes, trees, signposts.
Well, you won't put it on five feet of snow. Last year, it would have been on top of five feet of snow.
Right, true, right, exactly. Yeah. And we'll be able to still manage that, but it just, we definitely need it to be as close to the curb as possible and away from other items. But very good point, thank you.
But the homeowner won't be able to get it on top of five feet.
That's what I mean. And you might want to just provide guidance to the owners.
There should be a whole order.
Because I really don't, I don't know myself what I would do.
Yeah, I think we could put something...
Except sticking in the middle of my driveway would be the only place to put it, and then you can't drive in and out of your driveway.
Right. No, we'll get something out.
So you might want to...
And have a diagram for residents to help.
Sure.
That might be a good idea.
Yeah.
Because it's different for everybody, I should.
Okay.
Or at least for half the people that have them.
We have 70 left, so.
Still have 70 left?
We have 70 left of the 3,500 we ordered, so.
Valentine's Day, perfect gift.
You got that one, huh? Are you opening that up?
Good luck with that one.
Are you restricting it to the wards? Yes, you are, because you can only pick them up in those wards, right?
This, any resident, if they're so interested, can contact us.
So which wards have them now? Three and...
All the wards have them.
Oh, awesome.
All the wards have them, and, yes.
Did you have a name for that?
What, no, I just, a la carte.
Yes.
Oh, marketing might not be our thing. But that being said, if there's any other comments as far as public works go, well, let's ask Mike, but if there isn't, let's give him a break, because he hasn't had much sleep. But next item would be comments on the iPad update, and I don't know if there...
Well, actually, it's more to see if there was any questions or issues that you have. Most of you have had previous experience with iPads. Some of you are fairly new to it. But Joe Gabanski from our I.T. department is here this evening, so if there's any specific issues, and that would include any issues with respect to your email addresses as well, because we know we've migrated all of you to a new email address, and we want to just make sure if there's any other issues out there that we can address those and try and make this as helpful and easy for each of you as possible.
I don't know if the public needs to suffer through a technical session.
I'm having some difficulty accessing mine while I'm driving.
And you set it above the steering wheel?
Okay.
Next to the hamburger and the big gigantic sloping.
I can get on my email using my AOL account, but I can't set up my iPad to get on my city email directly. We tried, Alderman Morris unsuccessfully tried to put me on earlier, so maybe you could help me out with that later.
We can definitely do that offsite.
Absolutely. And also, am I going to get a protective cover for this?
Well, we do have an update on the protective covers. We do apologize, but we're trying to get a replacement, because we did order Basic Black. They sent us this.
Can you see it?
No. I don't know, it's pretty, I don't know if it's appropriate for business. So we're getting returned, we're getting Basic Black, so as soon as we get those, we'll be...
Are there films that fit over the front of these?
There can, yes.
Okay, are we going to get those?
You don't need them.
We don't need them.
If you have the protective cover, you're pretty good.
Mm-hmm.
Now, are we supposed to buy programs for it?
Yes. Part of the documents we sent over, we do have a recommended annotation, PDF annotation software that we do go with it. You will have to purchase it through the iTunes store. You can do it directly from the iPad itself. There's no need with the new iOS to hook it up to another computer to do that download. You can do the download directly from the wireless Wi-Fi or the cellular connection.
Yeah, I think the cost is $10, $9.99, something like that, and so you can just submit the bill and we'll get you reimbursed. It's not a huge cost. Now, if you go on to buy any other apps, you're on your own.
I wouldn't do that. I already did. Okay.
But also, I will emphasize, too, that we, while you don't have anything on tonight's agenda, if at any time there's an attachment that tends to be voluminous, and you would actually like to have a hard copy, you can just let Bertie or myself know, and we can make sure that you get a copy of that as well.
Okay. Can we, I mean, I assume there's enough memory for us to store all the documents that we get. I just don't understand yet the file system, like, how we access those. I can access them, if I have the transmittal letter, I can hit the attachment that will put me on, but I don't understand the filing system.
It is completely different than if you work with a standard Windows or Apple workstation. It is slightly different on the tablet. If you do get the PDF annotation software that we recommend, you'll see that it sort of moves on to the sort of standard file system that you're used to.
Right.
So it'll definitely help out. But right out of the box, yeah, it is completely different. You would have to result into using your email for storage or something like that. There's no easy way to pull a document into this sort of tablet right now.
Okay. Are we going to be using the cloud?
Yes, absolutely.
Those are all the tech questions I can get. That's about as technical as I can get, though.
Well, if we want a break now, we can see if we can straighten out your email address on this issue.
Yes, yeah, fine.
Okay, and, well, I'll be likely contacting you to inch through it so I can at least figure what I'm doing as baseball season approaches. But no, it's about time. Appreciate it.
Yeah, no, give us a call, and then I'll set something. I'll be there with myself or my staff, whoever's available, at your time, at your convenience. We can set it, set up time, make sure everything's working appropriately for you.
I'll bother you tomorrow.
Sounds good.
That being said, if there's no more comments as far as the iPad usage, has to be an opportunity for public comment on items that weren't on the agenda. And there being none, is there a motion for adjournment?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries, that concludes the committee, the whole meeting for January 3, 2012.